Hang on.
Come on.
Go there, one, one.
There you go.
Oh, are they?
Yeah.
It's not a touchscreen. Here you go. All right, this is, um, Michelle and Conchette zoning commission work session. Uh, December seventh, twenty twenty-two. It's seven oh two. And I'm Regan Starkey, the chairman. Uh, sitting next to me is Brett Hunter, Herb Clebon, and Rich Linder. Larry Marks and our alderman Tony Morco are absent tonight. We also have Jeff Shipman, the zoning inspector. Um, we're going to table the approval of minutes until after the meeting because we're gonna just sign them. I think we all will agree to them, so we're gonna, um, go on to other things. I think we need to talk about, um, we don't have any text changes, do we, that are pending?
Let me tell you, the, the, uh, code requires us to send some out to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Um, about any texts, you know, has to be sent to the recorder, we know that. And, uh, we're actually redoing the, um, what they sent back from.
Oh, okay.
And that was still on that.
That was still pending?
Yeah, and.
So we don't have to work on anything like that?
Well, right now, we're looking at the whole book.
Uh-huh.
And there's some things in there now that I don't know if like I woke up or something, you know, cause I see people waking up. But I started looking at the book and I got five, four different other books.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and I got two from different townships and I got our old one that we actually was nineteen seventy-five, I told it like that compared to what we got today.
Mm-hmm.
And there were some changes back in ninety-five. In the reading on it, it's a single family dwelling could not have more than five people in the house.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're looking at that book and this thing has to be.
Updated again.
Re-looked.
Mm-hmm.
And I found out it was back then as our trustees.
Mm-hmm.
And I was like, why, why did they do this? Cause I looked, I thought maybe it's just in some of the.
I don't remember that.
All of our, um, other books do not have that text in it, it's just changed in nineteen ninety-five with an amendment.
Does, is it in our current book?
Yes.
Oh.
That means like somebody who has a large family, they have over five kids, they have to get rid of a couple. That's the way it reads.
Yeah.
And it was showing, you know, I was told Sandy, I said, we gotta get after this because every year that, um, there's code that requires us to update our book. And so I'm on my page two. Yeah, so I wanted to start bringing this up to you, we're going as fast as we can, you know, I mean, I figure we got until the end of March or something like that to get that thing done.
Because we, we approved this one in twenty nineteen.
Yes.
It was pre-COVID.
Yeah, and we, we put this stuff that we did back in there, but then your other stuff, we did, we stuck into that. But we also have stuff that's not been put in that, that book, and there's stuff that they say now from what it means that we have, and I haven't seen it anywhere. You know, it's like people making stuff up.
Hmm.
So we need to really gather chicks, I guess, you wanna call it like that? And be able to find out where we're at.
And in that single family, that's in the definition?
Yeah, we have definitions and you, yeah, if you look at the night, the new book, um, the definition for dwelling, single family, read it. Now, I don't, it's just not in mine.
Yeah, I, no, I believe you. I'm just surprised, cause I didn't know I was on the board at ninety-five.
What I read, I was like. Yeah, and there's stuff in there that, um, that someone, one of the trustees is trying to get me to get after somebody and the code does not read where I can do it, I'm like, man, who the hell? And we really, you know, from COVID, we had just.
I can't find single family dwelling.
Me neither. What's it say? You got it there?
Yeah, I can't find it. Single family dwelling.
Dwelling.
Oh, maybe dwelling.
Yeah.
I looked under single family.
Yeah, I looked at dwelling.
Dwelling, there we go. What's it say? Not more than five lodgers or boarders.
Yeah. And, uh, in the.
It says the same thing about two-family dwelling.
Only five of each side. And I'm like this, you guys want me to do this?
Huh.
Yeah, and I got trustees telling me all I need to do is, I said, I can't.
You know, it's funny because that was brought up, um, I don't know if you remember this or not, but at that, um, what do they call it, the seminar?
Yeah.
At Outing Zippo Lake. Cause, uh, Alliance said they had a church group home that they were letting people stay in, there was like fifteen people living there.
Yeah.
In a residential area. And everybody said, well, you shouldn't do that, but. What are you gonna do?
Well, the, we have found out online in my book, it, um, no trailers. It reads in there, no recreational trailers, boats and stuff are allowed in the front of the house.
Mm-hmm.
Recreational.
Right. And now somebody's living in it.
Now, somebody's got, no, somebody has, they do commercial. They're not recreational trailers.
Oh, they're commercial trailers for work.
Yeah, and I got one down here and I said, I don't have the code, I gotta wait till we get back and we change that. But they, they wanted me to do something, I said, I don't do anything without code.
Okay.
I'm not doing that.
No.
And they're all crazy about it. But, um, yeah, it says recreational, as I read that sentence.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I was taught English, I know what that sense is.
It does say recreational.
Yeah. It's an adjective, I'm pretty sure.
Yep.
Yeah, so that has to be taken out or something has to be changed about that, but, you know, it's just over and over and over, and I'm not going to do something. I wouldn't do that, or we could just go ahead and start doing what we wanted to with everybody, you know, and.
Yeah, you can't do that, everything has to be by the book, and if the book's wrong, then we have to change it.
Yes, so, yeah. Good. Yeah, I figure we got till the end of March to get it all done, so we got, what, three meetings or something like that, yeah.
Well, let's get it really hard in January.
Oh, well, you know what, we gotta send it in the regional planning for the, okay.
I know.
We're safe by code because we were rejected by it and we have nothing to hand in for our text amendments to the court also.
Hmm.
So I might send them a letter and tell them, hey, we're looking at it and, um, there's some things like our, um, agricultural stuff, we got like a whole page on it, and then I take a look at other townships and they got like maybe, um, this much of the thing, right, because we don't need to know all this stuff. And we don't need to put all that in the book. So, you know, you come down to office, I'll show you some of the stuff that's, um, you know, moving and taking and.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we can really shorten the book up a little bit.
There's some things that are beyond our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
If it's in the Ohio Advice Code, we can't do anything about it.
Well, you know what, they used to copy and paste it and put it in there like, you know.
Uh-huh.
Oh, we wrote this.
And I don't know if you saw this, there was a news article about three weeks ago in the paper that Ohio was doing something about Airbnbs. And we already did it, and the one thing that they wanna do is the first thing that they wanna change is it has to be posted on the back door that it's an Airbnb and the numbers and all that. We did that a year ago. Two years, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, but they forgot a lot of us.
But now that they're doing it.
Yeah.
We don't have to do that anymore, right?
Well, we can stick to what we're doing.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it was just something that I thought was funny because they said, well, you know, it's supposed to stay on the back of the door, front door. And we said that two years ago.
And you guys worked on that for about a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and even the county came in here, remember?
And we were the only township that did.
Yeah. And then everybody calls around when I go to our meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Sure wish somebody had already done this.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of them copied ours. Okay, so that's, uh, January meeting, we really wanna look at some of the things in the book, if he gets time, I know it's the holidays, but take a look and see, he's got.
We're gonna do that red and, and green thing so you guys can look at it and see what the office has done with it.
Yep.
And then you got the old one, you can take a look.
Cause you're out there every day, you know what the problems are, and I can't find problems just by reading it.
No.
You have to live it. Unfortunately.
So, January, we're gonna work on trailers?
I got single family definition, commercial trailer, so far.
Remember we were doing the definitions and they asked, why are you doing definitions?
Uh-huh.
Well, now I showed you.
Well, I, we put definitions in here that we don't even have any rules about.
No, and you know what? Some of the stuff in their, uh, books have prohibitions, they actually write them in there. You know, so I can say, well, this is what they allow, but what don't they want?
Mm-hmm.
It's not in there.
No, it's not in there. Well, a lot of times we used to say, if it's not in there, we don't allow it. That's what, that's how we got away with that, because if it's not in there, you, you can't take us to court. I mean, that's what we did with those seven-seven-seven places.
Yeah.
We never put a thing in there about it.
And then there would be the variance, uh, where we have to park in there.
Right, right.
So we should write something in there, and then it's not, we have a cover, send them over to the.
Yep.
Yeah.
Maybe that's what we should do, put that in the, in the front of the book, say, hey, if it's not in here, we don't allow it. It's hard to prohibit anything.
We don't wanna be mean.
No, it's just against a lot of landowners. Property owners.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna work on those things in January. Um, do we have any votes for zoning changes tonight?
No, we have nothing in that order.
Okay.
I mean, we're, we've put a halt to the denial.
Okay.
Of all of our stuff, and we talked about when we got back in here.
Yeah.
You guys will go over all that stuff again. I found a couple of things that they allowed in other townships that they denied you guys.
I know one right offhand.
Who?
Um, they denied the grandfather clause definition.
Yes, everyone knows what else they.
And it's in Jackson Township's book.
You go into the, um, later township?
Mm-hmm.
They allow part B.
Oh, the home employment?
They, it's in there, everybody.
And they wouldn't let us do that.
Yeah.
And that's two cases right there. One of six of them brought is the definition of grandfather clause. Cause everybody comes in here, they say, what, what are you talking about, your grandfather name? What do you think we're grandfathered of?
Right.
And we, we just wanna put it in the book and they won't let us.
Well, I was thinking about bringing it up at one of their meetings when I go in there, I'm gonna show them, say, what's this?
Yeah, look, here's ours, here's theirs.
Take it to the board over there at the county.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we feel like we're not being treated properly out here.
I get that feeling sometimes.
Yeah.
It might have started with, uh, hiring a legal counsel, I don't know.
He's gonna get mad.
Huh?
They get mad down there.
Yeah, they're very jealous.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
What else we got on the docket tonight?
Um, Kinkay, um, Enterprises. Uh, I think I sent you the email that was sent.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and, uh, I just wanted everybody to know that, um, the county already has, um, standards on how to, um, the stormwater. And, uh, I got an email in there, and it's logical, and, um, any engineer can not overdo or he, and even our, uh, our road department has to wait on the engineers to tell them what to do. You know, I mean, you send over, you say, this is what I wanna do over there, and they send the, um, the, well, this is what you have to follow.
You guys had the public meeting, I can't remember. We had a public meeting for the property there. Um, and all the concerns of the neighbors were due for prejudice.
Right.
Yeah, I was there.
Here, here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I kept telling them that I think the engineer is here, that he would do a fine job and don't worry about that.
Actually, that was what, a couple of months ago?
Yeah.
Like, three months ago.
Okay, I was here then.
Okay, but, but what they're saying and, and what we should all know is that their standard is set by the county, not, not, not us.
Right, right.
So we weren't concerned with it, but the neighbors were.
Sure.
But the neighbors don't need to be concerned because the county's supposed to handle that. Is that what we're saying basically?
Now, the one concern the neighbors had before is the current flooding issues.
Right.
So the county is willing to step in for this project.
Right.
But the county is not willing to step in for the current problem.
Right, because there's changes being made.
Okay, this has been going on for, flooding's been happening.
I, I agree.
And they're now wanna step in?
Well, they wanna step in because they don't wanna step in, they want to regulate what happens when the changes are made. You see what I'm saying?
They cannot.
They don't, they don't, everything status quo is okay, cause they don't have to spend the time. But somebody's making improvements, they wanna regulate and oversee those improvements.
I'd just rather see the township and the county step in prior to this.
Let me ask.
I know. Go to the trustee meeting.
You, you guys have something up there right now, it's been like that, all right? What you're doing is you're saying that this company has to come in and make it better, which probably will happen.
Yes.
You know, because the county's not gonna let them go out there and make something worse and say, oh.
Right.
By yours.
Right.
So we're, we're stuck maybe at where, where it is now.
Mm-hmm.
But the county might come and say, hey, you guys should do something that's gonna make it better, it's not gonna go backwards, it's all going forward. And the county will, you know, they messed it up, county will be out there. Hey, it wasn't like this, now you, you made it do this. There's no intent on this company to do harm, you know what I mean, and that's, you gotta get that out of your head. You know, I used to do what he's doing. I'm down Texas, I used to do this kind of work. And we never went in and made it worse for people's houses that were being flooded, we just did. You know, the engineers check over the prints, they okay it. You know, I mean, this is gonna be good, we have to do some things, you know, but but I'm saying, you know, it's not a, um, a vote for, let's, you know, go down and fix Addison or whatever the street it is. And make it better, cause you can't put that on that company's.
No, no.
You know what I mean?
No.
And say, oh, yeah, you can.
This should have been put on the county for, this should have been put on the county long time ago. Fifty years.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I agree.
Yeah, I think that's the other option for that too, is it's not.
We're just looking for a zone change, it's all to get more land.
It's not their problem to fix, the county's problem, you know, so vice versa. I get that a hundred percent.
It's, you know, it's both ways.
Yeah.
But like Brett said, it's been a trust.
Well, yeah, there's, there's been a problem down there forever, you know, like I said, I mean, it is.
You know, once time I had, I had to keep pace with it, and then I'm needing for the water. And what I needed to do to absorb water, and right now, you know, it's grass and that's the best.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, we just wanna, you know, say, hey, you guys can do this, and then we, we're gone out of there. You guys are not responsible for stormwater drainage, you know?
Right.
You know what I mean? All you're doing is that here is just saying, you know what, you can go to B two or, you know, so you can do what you wanna do back there. And then let the county, you know? That's what the thing is on my, down in my office, it's always, they want me to come out there and be the policeman and I'm not.
Yeah.
And I look at it closely and say, I can't do that, that's a county job. You know, I mean, we're kinda like area of use, and you guys are kinda like the same, you know, I mean, we're stuck in that. So. But, um, yeah, we, you would be saying, you know, it's, uh, this is the area you wanna do, and, um, the use of it. Things, apart, I know that, and I'm not doing any of it. Is that correct? That's correct. What's the use of the property that you were trying to change over to B two? What's the use?
So we're trying to.
To be three.
That was to be three, just to keep, keep it the same as what the property is now. That's all.
That's it, that's all we're for.
Right.
Hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna be integrated into that property.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, just an extension of it.
Right.
We're just here. Tell the county, you'd like to go there for two.
Cause it's working.
And, um, it's actually a lot of land, everything about it, we go with, um, what they're doing. They won't, you don't build in on it, or something like, you just wanna put a fence down there or something. And we're for that.
Well, it helps with the set backs.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I mean.
Basic.
Yeah.
Basically, it's a junkyard now.
They really need to get cleaned up.
Okay, so we're not voting on any zone changes?
Yeah, you're voting on, uh,
Oh.
Then being what you blocked was the.
Oh, okay.
The B, B three?
B three. B three is what they exist in.
County will have a B two, you know, but I just vote. You know, but yeah, they can, uh, change it, I, I don't know what it is right now. I think it's residential or something, but.
Yeah, it's R one.
It's R one.
They just wanna change.
And that was for that little piece in the back?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just the north side.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's, we need to vote on that tonight.
And, uh, yeah, so I can send it in and say, tell the county we'd like to change it to. You know, they're gonna get B two, so you, you know.
Mm-hmm, but the rest of the property, we.
It's already.
It's already B three. Because some of it was, and some of it wasn't.
Right.
And then we changed. To get it all the same. All the same, except for that little piece.
And if I remember right on that map, there was just a little, little line that kinda divided the whole.
It's sixty-foot line.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the same depth as our property that is now.
Okay.
It, yeah, it's a quarter acre, basically.
Right.
Um, well, then I'm gonna make a motion that we change that little strip of property to B three.
I second that motion.
Herb, second it. Okay, so we're gonna have a roll call vote, I'm gonna, Regan Starkey says yes. Brent? Hunter?
Yes.
Herb Clebon?
Yes.
Rich Linder?
Yes.
Okay, so four, nothing, it passes as we are recommending the regional planning and the trustees that it gets changed to be three, the remainder of his property.
I think I got a, a little, the old card in there, I can send out.
Okay.
I'll send that out from Friday.
Okay.
We have five days.
Okay. The trustees will not vote on it yet.
No, it's gotta go down to, um.
It's gotta go to regional planning.
Yeah, it's gonna come back to you.
Yes.
And you're gonna tell me to give it over to the, uh, trustees.
As soon as I get it, I will tell you. I'll either drop it off at the office or call you or email, or all three.
Well, you know, we're trying to write standards and stuff and like catch.
Yeah.
Put a hold on what we're doing. You know, we got a lot of new stuff.
Well, the thing is, at that seminar, they put on a projector up there, how things happen in the zoning commission. And Larry took a picture of it.
He has it.
And it's like, bing bong, bing bong, bing bong, bing bong.
Why have that?
Yeah, okay, you saw it. So, how to change those things? They told us that at that seminar.
Can I tell you something like?
They're changing it.
We got into it over at my township, and she said, well, I got, they don't want to do it.
That's what I thought.
And then I turned around, I went back here and I picked up their information. And we did exactly what they.
I know, I know.
I didn't know what I was doing, but just stop.
Yeah. They said we had to have a public meeting, and we had to have it, and we approved by regional plan, and we have to have them here, and you vote on them. And you have to give it to the trustees, and then they have to turn it into the prosecutor within. And, and now they changed all of them. She turned it all around.
There's three ways to do it.
Right.
We did, we did exactly what I told you. The way you told us to.
Yeah, and there again, it doesn't have to go through the zoning commission, the trustees are allowed to change zoning and the book by themselves, they don't need us to recommend.
Well, they do, they have to send it back to you if they don't like it, send it back to you.
That's a big thing, you know, I mean, it's six months.
That thing was, yeah. It just goes all over the place and we don't get things done, that's what took Airbnb so long.
Right, right.
Yeah, they need time.
I think that we're caught up for the night, I have one question that I'm gonna bring up, um, we have in this book that you gave us, it's a nice book you gave us, uh, Rich, your term is up.
Remote.
You wanna read up? You can fire me. No, I didn't wanna, I just, I just wanna let you know that you have to, uh, apply. And when I say apply, you just have to tell the trustees that you want to be reinstated or you wanna retire or get fired or anything. I'm not firing anyone.
Oh, darn.
Um, if anybody else wants to resign, you have to let the, you have to write a letter to the trustees. I'm due, I got one more year and I'm not sure, this is my thirtieth year.
Well, you know, we say we're gonna do something and then we're all gonna get out of here, we didn't.
Yeah.
But I hope everybody stays on because, you know, the book does need to be looked at, you guys have like been on, you know, and you're looking at this.
Thank you.
See you guys. I'll, I'll talk to you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Um.
We'll send you the bill.
Okay.
But anyway, I just wanted to mention that the terms are in here, and I think, uh, Herb, you're on till twenty twenty-five.
Hmm.
Um, mine is up next year, Larry is, has been reinstated, he's good till twenty twenty-six. Uh, Brent, you're on till twenty twenty-four. I would imagine that Tony's on till he got, twenty-seven.
Yeah.
He's on for five years. It was funny, I told him, I'm thinking about giving it up, and he's like, you better not, you just got me on here. He was all upset about it. Anyway, I wanted to bring that to your attention because it's near the end of the year. And you all saw the pay thing and signed it. Okay, and did, did you check and see if the ninth was on here? It should have been.
Yeah.
I think it was. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate it, if you see anything in the book, you don't have a book, let me know. And look into it, because this is code that we have to have this book done, and I'm gonna try, I'm gonna stretch it out. Look, start going right down through there and read stuff, and then the definition, you know, be like, and send it in to me, so, you know, cause I got Sandy and I going back and forth with this. And she does, this is a major thing to look at, but we get this all straightened out, and I got another couple of other books that you can take and look, see what they're doing and comparing, and see what I see. You know, I mean, we got this much in there, and somebody else got this much, and then, well, we got this much, they got this much, and I'm thinking, we're gonna take the smallest out of each. And we can go ahead and find the code, we don't need to write the code in a book, you know, for our seed. You know, and it has to do with agriculture. You know what I mean?
I think we got a lot of that straightened out just by letting the county handle it.
Yeah, okay.
You know?
What was funny is we put all this stuff in there, you know, you got one to five acres and blah blah, and I look over at one of the townships and it says this. This is what we can end it, blah, 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 and it says, we have no permits for agriculture, and I've been trying to tell people that.
Yeah, that, that has to be approved by the county.
And we got something this long on it, that doesn't say one thing about that, you know what I mean, you gotta be right there and say, this is, you know. And if it's got a code to it, anybody can go in there, we can print it out and say, here, everyone's gonna read this, if, you know. But if you put too much into it, what happens is, is like, you're coming down to the agriculture, you're doing one acre, and then you do one to five, okay, I get, and then they swing over and they go on the next one, and it's really like. Percentages of this, percentages of that, and that's where people are gonna get confused, and then they just lose it all, and it's right.
So we're standing.
County does control that.
We need to simplify.
Yeah, simplify the book, and we don't need to put it in there because the county handles it.
Well, agriculture, that's, I think that's, has been addressed a bit this year.
Um, more than enough.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, it's the time of time again, hasn't it? It's not once, it's not twice, it's like five times, six times. We haven't even had to deal with it because he does, and then the county does, we haven't had any questions brought to us about it.
Well, you can tell, you know, I talked to you a long time, about an hour or so down, and I had somebody else and I had everybody, him know it, and then I sent a young couple in as an experiment, and they came back.
And he said it's done.
Yeah, so we, they want an affidavit from, you know, and I said, we don't even need that, what we need it for? The county takes care of it, and the affidavit, I don't even sign off on it, it's just to let us know that they're out there doing farming stuff, why do I need to know?
You don't need to know that.
No, change the subject, but this single family definition. Why does it have to be so complex?
Doesn't.
That's what we're saying, you're catching on.
You have to, I'm beginning the book.
You're catching on, that's what we're saying, simplify it.
I was over at a party.
Did that tonight?
He's only said I did the first book.
We have to send in, we're gonna send in a bunch.
You know what it says in the other ones on the definitions, a single, or a dwelling, single family? A dwelling that holds a single family.
Doesn't matter the size, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what size, it's always one family, who cares how big your family is?
I can tell you, the health department determines that kind of.
The size of the home.
Yeah. You got a two bedroom, you got a three bedroom, and your septic system is approved for one or the other, the other, the other, it doesn't have anything to do with how many people are in the house. If you build a three bed, a four bedroom home, you're gonna have to put a four bedroom septic system in. I mean, that's, that's controlled by the county, it doesn't, we don't have nothing to do with that. And it doesn't say anything, it doesn't say anything in the health department rules, how many people can live in that house.
This was, this was written, this book recently was written in nineteen seventy because there was no zoning.
Yeah.
And so we put these definitions in, and it's gotten revised at least four times that I know of, and, and the last time was twenty nineteen.
You can't, it's hard to go through every definition.
What you guys gave me, I put in there and we changed it so that the court is all get, gets it, all right?
Let me think, it's written in the back when we changed it.
Well, that's the other thing, I mean, things change so often.
Just like the agr- agriculture thing? You could get a little one and a half acre lot put into agriculture. Just because they changed the rules and regulations and they do it all the time, it continuously changes.
Yep.
If you raise chickens. You could get agriculture. And you could have chickens in a lot of cities.
They had this one, I'm looking. And I've been looking at that, and they said, this is in the court right now, and this happened over down in the southwest section, and it was about weddings and barns. That is ongoing right now, and they said, that might affect anybody in the whole state, because they were um. They took him in and they said they wanted no weddings and barns, and when it was, they were charging for it, all right? So the judge says, no, they put an injunction on him, took it back, and the guy says, I'm not charging anymore, they're gonna buy my wine. And then the judge looked at him, he had a thirty thousand dollar tag on him already, and now he said, because he's not charging them for having a wedding. They can go there and have a wedding, but they have to buy his wine, and you take these walls and you just churn them, you know, that was a good read, I love it, it's too funny.
That, that's the thing that's bad about any kind of reg, rule or regulation, doesn't matter what it is.
There's a way around it.
There's, there's a way around every one of them, you know?
I know.
And it's ridiculous.
Like I said.
That's why you have to keep everything simple.
It was great, but long, I mean, before nineteen seventy, there wasn't zoning in, no, it's all down.
Right.
So back to that.
Well, if everybody would be a good neighbor, we wouldn't need to.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
You got that and you got, you got your orders that are out there to make a buck.
Okay, I'm gonna um, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like I said, we're gonna stick around and sign these.